All right, let's go ahead and call our work session to order. That was a little harder than I even expected. All right, so, sorry, I'm just confused like in a decent job that's all of a sudden. At seven o'clock, it's o'clock.
I think the, at least in email version, it's six P M. It's flipped around.
Yeah, all right, there we go. So I'll start off with the review of ten nights agenda was here with me on that one. And then we'll get into our work session. At seven, we will be having our Sandy urban renewal board meeting in which we will be approving our minutes from January fifth. And under new business, twenty twenty-three changes to the Sura grant programs as well as an approval. Are looking to approve of the facade grant application at the Sandbar barbecue. Then it looks like we will then get into the remainder of our agenda for our city council meeting. On our consent agenda, we will have public comment. And then on our consent agenda, we have our city council meeting minutes from our July seventeenth. Meeting, the revision and expansion of utility customer assistance program under resolutions. Under new business, we have the noise exception for the chainsaw carving event. They called me today to be a judge of that. Ever judged that chainsaw carving event? That I'm a judge?
Yes. I think they're assuming you've said yes.
Okay, all right. We'll round off the evening with a report from our city manager as well as committee council reports. With that, let's go ahead and get into our work session. Jeff, will you please call the roll?
Mayor, so I'll go ahead and start with our planning commission. Chair Crosby.
Here.
Commissioner Wagners.
Here.
Commissioner Pullman.
Here.
Commissioner Lee.
Here.
Yep, Commissioner Vincent.
Here.
Thank you. Commissioner Myron. Let's see, yeah. And Commissioner Ramsay.
Yeah.
Okay, and then Councilman.
President.
Councilor Smallwood.
She's gonna be late this evening.
Okay, Councilor Sheldon, here. Councilor Walker.
Yeah.
Councilor Exner.
There.
Councilor Hokinson.
Excused.
Emir Paulian.
Here.
All right, thank you, everybody. And I forgot to mention the joint work session with planning. Thank you to our planning commissioners for being with us this evening. We will be discussing the comprehensive plan block two goals and policies review. I am gonna need to leave here with a couple more, but perhaps not. I'll be in trouble when I get home. With that, Tyler, do you like to start us off?
Yeah, thank you, Mayor and Council and planning commissioners for your attendance this evening. As you know, we're well underway in updating our comprehensive plan. And the purpose of this joint work session this evening is to talk about block two goals and policies, which include natural hazards and resiliency and parks, trails and natural resources elements of the cop plan. And with that, I'll turn it over to Kelly if she has anything else to add.
I'm actually gonna, just for the sake of time, I'm just gonna kick her right over the knees.
Great, am I sharing my screen?
I'm happy to do it for you if you like.
Sure, yeah, can I navigate that PowerPoint here?
Sure, so we can also just have you share the slides.
Yeah, that's fine.
Yeah.
Great. Hopefully that is popping up to everyone. Excellent. Good evening, my name is Ari Spacam. Free consulting now at all of you, but maybe not, or some of you, but not all of you this evening. I am supporting the city in the update to the comprehensive plan. So this is the second of three briefings that we're having as a joint work session with city council and planning commission with regards to reviewing the work that's been ongoing for the last now almost year and a half. So the purpose of tonight is to come back to you with some revisions to the original draft of the goals and policies for block two topic areas. As a reminder, this was sent out to you in June. I go had a chance to review from in advance of going to our C E C and having some additional discussions with folks. So I'm gonna walk through some slides, some of which are familiar to you, but then we'll get it for the other conversation. Oh, and I just wanted to say one thing, we do have a special guest tonight. I wanted to introduce Tanya Graham, who is on the line via Zoom. She's calling in from Ashland. Tanya is with the Geos Institute and she is supporting in the natural hazards and resiliency planning portion of this work since there was such an emphasis on wildfire and natural hazard mitigation in the cop plan itself. And she was a really big collaborator in the goals and policies of block two and will be online to help answer questions and kind of walk through where these came from and where they're going. So.
We just. It's a media.
Oh, got it. All right. So a quick refresher on just what our process has been like, our schedule, where are we in this? It's, I feel like I see you every six months and a lot goes on between those, those six months. So we did a lot of work last year in preparing the twenty fifty vision statement with the community, quite a splash. We identified where we want to go. In the meantime, we also prepared a number of technical background documents, like your E O A, your H and A. So a lot of stuff going on in the background. And we are currently developing goals and policies based on all that community feedback we got through the visioning process. And then some more targeted conversation groups and having stakeholders with regards to certain topic areas. That will all culminate in a draft comprehensive plan document that you will see in its final form for adoption sometime early twenty twenty-four. That'll be a combination of the vision statement, the background reports, goals and policies. I also like to share this schedule, it's a bit more detailed, but just to show you where we are in the cop plan update for twenty twenty-three. And then, as I mentioned, the adoption process is slated to start likely end of this year or early next year. So the way that we're working through the comprehensive plan itself. Currently, your comprehensive plan is a pretty simple Word document. It was last updated in nineteen ninety-nine. There have been several ordinances since then, of course, but it's fairly piecemeal in terms of the document. So really hoping to just overhaul it visually as well, obviously, in terms of content. The organization of the new content is gonna be a bit more streamlined, probably not as hefty. We're obviously organizing it within the framework of the community vision since that is driven by community members who are engaged in this process. And that's really shaping our goals and under which each goal will have a slew of policies. So we're looking at six vision themes, as you're all well aware of. We have probably about three to goals, three to five goals per vision theme. And then we have anywhere from about four to ten policies per goal. And then, just as a quick note, this document has legs through an implementation plan. There's a number of additional kind of more detail oriented statements that are kind of action items or implementation strategies that we're not gonna be adopting as part of the comprehensive plan itself because they're more like work plans and they are a cop plan directive. But we are capturing those strategies and those will be an appendix. So you will see those once we've wrapped up these three blocks of the comprehensive plan. And there's a lot more detail needed in those, yes.
Is that cop plan map in those details?
No, the cop plan map is a separate thing. Yeah.
I have this tendency to read this weird stuff going on in other cities. So one mayor was doing an update. He said, we're barking on our community's twenty forty master plan. I just thought it was a little humorous because our last master plan from nineteen ninety-nine was the twenty forty master plan. That background, just to ask, like, for no real good reason, but was it just insane that it was a twenty forty master plan back in nineteen ninety-nine?
Twenty-year planning horizons.
Yeah.
Just because typically a comprehensive plan is meant to help manage growth over twenty-year planning horizon. So it is peculiar that there is, I mean, you can do whatever you want. And maybe in nineteen ninety-nine, you wanted to think out.
So that was very ambitious.
Yeah, yeah, I mean, I know, for example, the city of Scapus, they're doing a fifty-year plan that actually is a look at their urban reserves, but it also includes updates their comprehensive plan. So there's kind of different ways of approaching it. Yeah. All right, so organization of content. Obviously, a comprehensive plan has a lot of things involved in it. Not only do we need to make sure that we are meeting the applicable statewide planning goals, but we also want it to be community-led or driven by topic areas that are important to the community. So we have organized the comprehensive plan in three blocks. Really just internal work process. We have three blocks and six themes, so it means reviewing two themes per block. So the last time I came to you, we were looking at the vision theme for community culture as well as transportation and infrastructure. That covered topics like community engagement, urban design, civic amenities, diversity, equity, inclusion. We talked about transportation, water, sewer, stormwater utilities and energy. So those were just some of the topic areas in that last block. The topic areas in this block that we'll look at tonight include parks and immigration, natural resources, biodiversity, natural hazards, resiliency, disaster preparedness and energy. A quick note, obviously, these topic areas are kind of all over the place. There's a lot of overlap and some of the thinking between one topic area and another. So we know we're doing our best to kind of organize the content in a logical way, but we do know that there is some content that will probably be in block two that also applies to ideas or policies in block three that also apply to policies in block one. So there's always a little bit of overlap. And of course, the way we've been going about each block here is we first internally as a team draft policy language. We share that out with you, city council, planning commission, for kind of your, your initial feedback and review. We take your feedback, we make some track changes to that. We share them out to our C E C as well as additional stakeholder engagement. And I'll talk a little bit about what that looked like for this block. And then we revise that, that draft based on that feedback. And then we come back to you with what we've learned and what, what we've changed since you last saw it. And then after tonight, we will finalize those draft goals and policies. When I say finalize, they're obviously still on draft form. You will see them again through the adoption process. But the point of doing it this way is that come the adoption process, all of this content will be familiar to you. You'll have had a chance to dig into it and revise it. And so the adoption process hopefully will be or feel seamless. Any questions before I get into it?
Well, see, on the staff report, you kind of identified the drafts and policies, Kelly, right? Didn't you, and just rationale or something? Am I confusing my?
I don't know the staff report. The staff report cover letter didn't identify changes specifically, but the PowerPoint itself here has just some kind of, like, conceptually, what are some of the major changes? So what I was gonna do is I'm gonna walk through just conceptually, like, what are some things that we may have changed between the first draft and the second draft? And then if we want as a team, like, together, we can go back and pull up those draft goals and policies and look at specific policies if you have questions.
Yeah, I don't think there's any disagreement about the goals that you've got here. It's just the policies.
Sure.
Get put in, you know, I kind of reviewed them before, made comments and then reviewed them again to see other people brought this stuff to the table. It was very good. And so I was just curious, I had a couple of questions about the actual policies, but I didn't wanna, you know, if you're just focusing on the goals right now.
No, 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 we're doing it all.
Okay.
Yeah, we're gonna do it all, yeah. So well, yeah, and I guess, so we'll look at the goals and policies. You'll probably all have questions about either or both. But I'll just kind of kick us off by just giving an overview of any kind of major changes so that you're kind of familiar with what it's looking like now. And then I also want to talk a bit about like, why we made those changes and where they came from. So just a reminder that none of this work stands by itself. It's supported by a lot of other planning efforts. So I listed out here kind of a number of planning documents that are ongoing or technical studies, some of which were really influential in development of goals and policies for the last block and some of which are really important for the development of goals and policies in this block. So the ones that are bolded, that are not great out, are the ones that were really, really important and we wanted to make sure had legs in the comprehensive plan. And that was the twenty twenty-one Parks and Trails Master Plan. Lot of really good information in that document that we wanted to make sure was mirrored in this comprehensive plan update. And as well as the twenty nineteen Clackamas County Natural Hazards Mitigation Plan. There is currently an update to that plan. So there's actually some really nice coordination happening between the content that we're proposing, the Sandy's cop plan, and then what Clackamas County is gonna incorporate in their own natural hazards mitigation plan.
So remind me, I see it says twenty twenty transit master plan, but guys, I feel like I was sitting in meetings a year ago on that thing.
I think it was adopted in twenty twenty.
I'm almost positive it was twenty twenty.
I think you're thinking of the T S P, right?
Yeah.
So what we were going through is just some of the transit stuff in that.
Correct, there were transit components in that, yes, correct.
All right.
And just to let you know, the, the transit components in that T S P come from the transit master plan. So there, I mean, I will say it's pretty impressive as a city to have this many kind of supporting and pretty important plans all sort of happening at the same time. Because it's really nice to have a comprehensive plan that is aligned with a brand-new T S P, a brand-new Parks and Trails Master Plan, like, all of these pretty big efforts that have kind of undergone their own public processes. Are, it's really nice to have.
We're all exhausted.
I'm sure. So in a way, so in a way, hopefully, the cop plan is actually the easiest part because it actually builds on things that you've already worked through so much in the last few years. In addition, many other inputs into kind of the work that you see here tonight. Not only do we have ongoing community outreach and engagement, we've been to lots of events, Sandy Mountain Festival, we're at the farmer's market almost once a month now. We also had that natural hazard stakeholder workshop series, which Tanya can speak a little bit more to. We talked about it at the last block, but a lot of the output from that really, really, like, I would say, very valuable workshop discussions that we had earlier this year. A lot of that input is really important for this block. We obviously had city staff working hard on reviewing the content I see here tonight. We have planning commission, city council, your preliminary review back in June of this document. And then honestly, what was really important too in this process were interviews and outreach to community partners, stakeholders, local and regional agencies and service providers. So also having a bit more of a technical lens, folks that have a deep bench of understanding and expertise around some of the topic areas, both locally at Sandy, but also maybe more regionally as well, to be able to bring an additional lens to some of the language in this document. So there's a lot of things coming from a lot of different places. Tanya, were you gonna speak to the workshops here or did you want me to walk through them? I forgot what we decided.
I can speak to them just a moment if you'd like, Anais.
Yeah, and I think so, I think council has heard a little bit from me about the stakeholder workshops at the last briefing. It'd be great for you to refresh our memory because it was really important for the development of this block.
Absolutely, good evening, Mayor, Council and Planning Commission members. So the, the outreach and engagement element of this, that the workshops filled is a really important part of looking at how natural hazards are changing as conditions change over time. So in the past, we've been able to simply look back at how has our community been impacted by specific climatic inputs, weather, natural disasters, that sort of thing. But we know that they're changing and people are already seeing those changes. That was part of the conversation in these workshops. But we hosted a series of two workshops. The first one was to identify and prioritize the vulnerabilities that come from these shifting conditions. The second one was to take the most, the highest priority vulnerabilities and identify strategies and solutions that would then come into the, into the cop plan. One of the things to point out in this particular element is that we do have a significant amount of that additional information that Anais referenced earlier in that we have both a lot of details around what those vulnerabilities are likely to be as well as some additional details around what implementing the solutions could look like for the city of Sandy. And the attendees, we were a mix of people from the, the city of Sandy, from community organizations, from the county in terms of emergency management and health and human services. So it was a, it was a good mix of people with a variety of expertise and perspectives.
Just some photos. The group was really powerful, I will say. I don't know if there was anybody in this room at any of those workshops.
Yes.
Yes, oh, hi. Yeah, I don't know if you had any kind of reflections on the conversations you had or things that surprised you or anything you wanted to share. You'd also don't have to.
Gosh, it feels like it's so long ago.
I know it was.
No, I remember it being, it was very helpful and I sat through some of this, you know, before.
Right.
Yeah, but it was breaking up in the smaller groups was very good. Get some of those ideas and such out there.
With Charles Crosby.
Yeah.
Yeah.
I can tuck up my pictures. That was good.
Yeah. It was really cross-disciplinary as well. So that was just felt quite powerful in terms of the conversations that were being had. We had folks from Public Works talking with folks from, you know, public health. And it just, it was, yeah, really interesting kind of solution development and identify identification of what are the highest priority vulnerabilities that we really need to be thinking about addressing as a community and what are the things that are really important to address via land use? Since obviously the comprehensive plan is land use.
Did you give a, any representation from the people that are actually doing the work? Things like developers, industrial people, people that are implementing a lot of this stuff? I see a lot of faces that I recognize. I did not stand on purpose. I noticed there's a lot of faces there that I don't see developers and see industrial folks. Maybe Kelly, you're the one that know those faces. Remember if any of those folks showed up or were this all?
So the topic here.
People who were environmentally focused.
Tanya, do you want to speak to just who the folks were in the room and maybe why? It wasn't that we had developers in the room, but we had other, other representation?
Sure, so in these, in these workshops, we look at changing vulnerabilities across five different community systems. So we look at them across the economy, natural resources, built infrastructure, health and human services and cultural values. And so the invitations went out to a variety of business owners locally, to people who are involved with utilities, with folks who are involved with emergency services and, and healthcare and then, and cultural groups, so organizations that are, that kind of underpin the, the, the culture of Sandy and anchor that. And of course, not everyone can attend, but what we did have strong breakout groups for each of those community systems. And that's, the, what we find is that as long as we have that nice mix of people, we tend to, they tend to do a good job of identifying those vulnerabilities. And when they prioritize them, it's just, it's, it's a, it's not, it's a, they're, they're in reference to each other. So it just helps us know which ones to focus on when we're developing strategies. But we were able to get through the major vulnerabilities that were identified in the first workshop in terms of identifying strategies in the second one.
Yes, I'd say we did reach to quite a few business owners. I think only maybe one participated. I've actually been having a lot of hard, I've been having a hard time actually getting business owner participation at things during the conference process.
It's a bit of a burnout.
Yeah, I agree.
Go through all this, but.
I totally agree.
That's why I asked the question.
Yeah.
Yeah.
So I do think they were represented in the room based on the feedback we received.
Okay.
But were they directly there? I don't think by and large, you know, Chris representing the chamber was there. And I do know that there was some other business interests there. But to answer your question directly, no, there, there wasn't a lot of business owners.
I just want to make sure we don't miss out on some of the, the other side of the world. Point about being careful about environmentally focused and understand the issues that are around green and all. But there are a lot of things that happen around this world that have to do with money and development and construction.
Yeah, I'd say, I'd say if you look through the goals and policies, there's definitely a focus on environmental benefits from policies. However, if you look at them, there's a lot of things that go way beyond that, such as cultural benefits, such as healthcare benefits. And I'm sure any, so Tanya can elaborate much more than I can, but it was, it was really a vulnerability assessment way beyond just impacts the environment.
Yeah, and I would actually just clarify that the invitees to this workshop were not your kind of classic, like, you're an environmentalist, come on a workshop. It was, it like, the representation was actually folks that work in a lot of different types of fields and have a lot of different areas of expertise.
I'm sorry, I, I don't mean to shut down this conversation, but we had this exact same conversation the last time you presented. And I just really don't feel like we need to continue to go through the same line of questioning. We've, we really spent some time on who was a stakeholder. I, I looked at these same pictures a month ago. I, I, I think we should look for.
Right. Yeah, and then in addition, we also had a really well-attended C E C meeting about a month ago where we invited Clackamas County Disaster Management, Clackamas County Public Health Division. The school district was there, the police chief was there, Clackamas Fire District, Parks and Recreation, and then also Clackamas County Disaster Management and the Public Health Division. So we had all of them review and comment and revise the goals and policies that are in front of you tonight. Okay, so I'll work through the two themes. The first theme is around natural hazards and resiliency. And there are two goal areas here, one around community preparation and one around community resilience. So we made some key revisions to this, this theme. We updated terminology, so you know, now we're Clackamas Fire District one. We also updated terminology around public safety power shut-offs was apparently the correct way to indicate that. We included additional partnerships for alerts and communications around emergency events. That came from the school district. We also combined and simplified a couple of policies. And then we also clarified evacuation procedures from evacuation routes. So kind of some small little terminology suggestions that were provided to us by like the fire district and folks that engage with this language on a, on a daily basis. I'll go into the next theme and then I wanted to go back and just open it up to questions and comments around the actual policies. Theme two was around parks, trails and natural resources. So once again, the first section of this was around parks and trails development. The goals here come directly from your Parks and Trails Master Plan. And then the second part there was natural, natural resources. And that talks about your forest, river and wetland ecosystems, tree canopy, preservation of open space, and then also goal around ensuring ecological sound development. So here we had some minor restructuring and rewording. We expanded some language for playground accessibility based on the Parks Board input. We added emphasis on fuel mitigation from the police chief, zero escaping and infill development. So that's kind of an overview of just some minor changes. I'm happy to pull up the draft and see if anybody wanted to walk through any policies they had questions about. And we can take it from there. And I guess kind of key considerations was for the purpose of this work session is do the goals and policies accurately reflect your understanding of the priorities that were uncovered during our visioning process last year? Are there vulnerabilities related to natural hazards that are not adequately addressed in this recommended suite of policies? And are there additional individuals, groups or sources that we should consult in finalizing these goals and policies? So just some questions to keep in mind as we're working through it. Um, can I share the stat or the draft goals and policies? Do you have those up?
So, you know. I can start, you know, and maybe, actually, it may be easiest for me to do it, actually, because I don't think we have the packet actually downloaded onto that computer. So why don't we go ahead and just?
Apologies.
No, no problem. Is this the, is this what we were talking about?
Yeah.
This section?
Yeah, and I just, I'm just gonna have this up on the screen. I'm sorry, am I sharing my screen?
This is me now.
Okay, great, great. I know, I lost control. Yeah, so I just wanted to keep these up in case we didn't want to walk through anything in particular. But yeah, are there any questions about any of, let's start with the first theme here, natural hazards and resiliency.
Kind of comment on the goal three.
Yeah, let's go to that.
If anybody else has on one or two, go ahead. Goal three, the way it read before was quite a bit different than it reads now. And I'm looking at three point six specifically.
Yeah.
And so, you know, before it said adopt land use policies that prevent or significantly reduce development in high-risk areas and educate residents and businesses about the risk of property investment in these areas and promote innovative site and building designs which reduce the adverse impacts. So I asked, and now it kind of says promote a reduction of development in high-risk areas. And I guess what I'm trying to get a understanding of is my understanding, I guess, before with, with code that we have is that we restrict development on steep ground and natural hazard areas. And I'm just shaking his head like, that's what I, you know, yeah. So, so how does, you know, but these policies kind of imply that, well, if it's just an innovative enough or if we just really, you know, assume the, you know. or if we just really, you know, assume the, you know, the risk isn't that bad or something like that, it just seems a little loosey goosey, I guess, for a policy.
Right. So I think your question before was about, uh, in the past version, there was a line in that policy. Also, can you scroll up? Cause it's actually policy 3.5 and 3.6.
Yeah, there we go.
Um, uh, about like, you know, not reducing the adverse impacts of development in, steep slopes and another natural hazards, like where, where you can or where they.
It says, it says adopt land use policies that prevent or significantly reduce development. That's pretty, yeah.
Yeah. So, but then there was an, an end to that statement that you, I think, had questioned. And so we removed that. And because this is a policy, we're called, we're not saying that it's a policy. We're saying, uh, I mean, this is a policy. We don't want to have a policy that says have a policy about.
So adopt land use policies is, this is a policy.
This is right. Exactly. So right now, so it's the same ethos. It's the same ethos. So right now, it says promote a reduction of development in high-risk areas and educate residents and businesses about the risk of property investments in these areas. Um, so high-risk areas can be, uh, can include areas that are delineated as steep slopes and things like that, that are obviously very direct in your code. There may be however, high-risk areas that you or someone envisions to be high-risk, but is not formally formalized in your code in some capacity. So really this is actually kind of a little bit more overarching in that the city's role here is to promote a reduction of development in these high-risk areas. And then also educating residents and businesses about the risk of investment in these areas. So you may be thinking about folks that are buying property in heavily wooded areas that are really prone to wildfire. But there's not necessarily any code that says you can't build because of wildfire. Maybe one day you will have that, which might be good. Um, so this is speaking to the fact that you want to be promoting, development that reduces adverse effects.
So would it be, and maybe it's in here, but would it be appropriate for us to have to say something about the Bull Run watershed? And mitigation on, for working with the city of Portland on, on their upkeep of that since it's a water source?
Yeah, that's a great point. Um, I don't know where.
That, that comes up later.
Yeah, we do, we do. But let's keep an eye on that.
Yeah, it was just a thought. Cause I was looking through the PTE deal.
Yeah, great.
That's the goal five.
Just so everybody knows too, on policy 3.6, we don't allow development on steep slopes over 25% if they're mapped in the FSH area. But there are, as Jerry knows, there are areas that aren't actually mapped in FSH and you can build on slopes greater than 25% uh, with the geotech study. So this is kind of getting to that, that we, we want to even kind of expand on that further and look into that more. Because sometimes when they do develop on real steep slopes, it does affect downhill neighbors. So, just wanted to point that out.
Can we do that? I mean, I'm surprised you can't build a tiny home or something.
I, we would have to research it more. Yeah. I mean,
required.
It does get to a point, as you can imagine, that it's pretty risky, especially as, as you know, there's no landslide insurance at all. So.
That's right. Yeah. Yeah. Um, I guess there's a hand up. Commissioner Wingers, yeah, that's a pretty great.
Thanks. Um, so I'm looking at goals somewhere between goals one and two here, and I'm seeing a lot of partnership with other organizations to work with community to kind of help prepare and educate them on the services that they provide. And I was curious, there wasn't a lot to me here on what, uh, partnering with community and the city of Sandy itself on its response and kind of its responsibilities. I didn't see any mention of anything like a continuity of operations plan, disaster recovery plan, or any kind of response plans? Or how we would work with, um, kind of the community and preparing city staff, uh, for those roles?
So, Anais, do you want me to?
Sure, go for it.
To take that. Uh, it's, it's a great question. And I would, I would refer you over to number, goal number four and, which is around partnering and coordinating regionally to reduce risk. There is a specific element in there about, um, implementing, working with communities across the region to implement the Clackamas Community Wildfire Protection Plan. It's also similar things in terms of the disaster management, um, elements that are not controlled by the city of Sandy. They're, they happen at the, at the county level. And so part of this is, um, is, is making sure that that coordination is happening exactly so that the city is clear about what its elements of those plans are. And then it's got that, the, the, um, protocols and processes in place to be able to do its part in the event of those kinds of circumstances. So a number of things are, are around coordination because the city of Sandy doesn't, doesn't hold that particular plan as, you know, it's, it's a, it's a partnership with other communities. Does, does that help commissioner?
Yeah, I'm just thinking, I know that the county is going to overall have the emergency response role for certain areas, but the city's also going to have their, their lead in certain areas as well. Um, and so.
Have an emergency response plan that they just updated that clearly defines roles and responsibilities and dovetails with the county plan for their part of it. So, um, you might want to mention that in here. Because, and it should be updated regularly because it wasn't.
Yeah, I just wanted to make sure.
That's great.
In addition to those community responses and us coordinating with them, that our roles specifically were addressed as well. But thank you.
Just a quick question or clarification on that. Where, where would you recommend to add that into the goals and policies?
It could easily go with four, all four, or I think you could also, uh, you know, with partnering with the community and response plans. I think you could probably figure it out in goal two as well, but probably, uh, two or four.
Sorry, are we suggesting the revision is to add, uh, as, um, Council Walker just mentioned, add a policy regarding up, regularly updating the city's, what was it, emergency response plan, emergency, that, that's. Any other questions about, I guess, these?
Well, I was going to go a little further, based on what his comment was, and it's a great comment because we do these emergency response plans and then put them on the shelf. And then it's something, you know, stuff goes down. And, you know, the people who are actually supposed to be doing it, things like, you know, the mayor, does he, is he clear on what he's supposed to be doing and not be doing? And that exceeds his authority and all that. Just making sure that everybody understands their roles and responsibilities. So it's one thing to do the plan and it's another thing to have a little bit of a workshop or training or something on implementing the plan. So.
I didn't think there were any of them on the floor. It is something we should probably bring back every two, at least every two years, at least every four years when there's new council members, but maybe probably every two years just to make sure it's out there. Jeff, am I incorrect in saying that they're requiring us to pay it every five years? The county updates it every five years, correct?
I think these are different documents. So the county updates its natural hazard mitigation plan. But what we're talking about here is the city's sort of operational emergency plan. So these, they go hand in glove, but they're different documents.
Who owns the city's operational emergency plan? Is that a building department? Is that fire district or?
Police.
It's historically been police.
With a lot of involvement from public works.
Right.
Both of which were heavily involved in this. So that's great.
Can we go back to 3.5 and 3.6 please? I'm wondering in 3.5, instead of promote a reduction of development in the high-risk areas, could we write it somehow to change it to restrict? So it's not so kind of movable and loose, loosey goosey like Commissioner Walker had said, to where it seems like there would be a lot less, um, judgment call when it came to the city, if we had a little more locked in on, had some rules to restrict what they were, what they were proposing to develop, whether than just we promote a reduction and.
Yeah. So you already restrict certainly, um, on steep slopes and over, over 25%. So this is capturing what happens in areas that are 20%. Um, do you restrict that? Or yeah, is there code language that says you restrict land development and land over 20%? Or do you, do you have some sort of kind of, you know, guidance to planning commission when there's an application for something that's at 20%? You can't necessarily restrict it, but you can kind of put on the hat of, well, we're going to be, we're going to look at this a little bit more carefully because it is in these areas that are not technically in the 25% or greater category, but are still, as we see it, could be high risk.
So we get into the gray area of shifting percentages and then it becomes a judgment call on.
Right. So this, so that is a judgment call. And this policy directs you to think of that as a judgment call and consider those as potentially higher risk areas.
Goal five.
I'm going up to goal four on four, about 4.5. That last one, engage with US Forest Service and ODF regarding updates to forest management plans. And I would also just say in timber harvest plans within the UGR, your regrowth boundary, they're supposed to do that, but, it doesn't always happen as we know. And so then what happens is adjacent, property adjacent to our UGB gets clear cut and the blowdown ends up affecting us and adjacent area. So just, um, forest management, those are kind of big things. And then actual timber harvest plans are things that actually make trees fall down.
Yeah, that's good comment.
Yeah, we can have that.
And then parks and trails?
The only thing I had was on goal three, 3.5. Study the application of stormwater user fees to supplement parks maintenance funding. If anybody's familiar with the, um, citizens of Bull Run versus City of Portland Water Bureau regarding Dodge Park, I'm not sure that's legal. Might ask the legal, you know, the, our lawyer about that. But I, if, you know, maybe it's legal, but you know, I was always told you can't use, you know, roads money on parks as much, as much as I would like to see it happen. Can't use, you know, water, water money on parks and things like that. So, I don't, you know, maybe there's some way to kind of make it, make the stormwater fee thing, you know, fit into open space, natural area, flood retention, yada, yada, something like that. Maybe there's a way to do that. You have to be pretty careful when you do that too.
Isn't that what the policy does?
Was this from the parks mess?
This was from public works.
Oh, this is.
This is the public works director who actually prepared most of this content.
Yeah, look, to look at.
There are ways to do stormwater detention and, and divisions corrected by using green spaces, which could be very easily be parks and trails, but parks anyway.
Yeah, but parks maintenance is not, you know, parks maintenance is, parks maintenance is not open space. So that's why I've kind of.
Well, I guess what, what I would say is, I think, considering it came from Jenny, that my gut tells me she was in a meeting somewhere or reading something somewhere or talking to someone, a peer somewhere that gave her this concept and she wants to look at it.
I think, you know, not speaking on behalf of Jenny, for my understanding, if we have a stormwater detention pond in a park, is that parks maintenance responsibility to clean that detention pond? Or is that public works responsibility with the stormwater utility fee to clean that stormwater detention pond? So, so I think, yeah, trying, you know, now that public works and parks are more separate because they're under two different umbrellas, really trying to streamline who's responsible for what, what fees can be used for what cleanup purposes and getting a clearer picture on that.
Well, this one does not say do that. It just says study the application. So to me, there is a possibility of creating some additional stormwater detention, some way, dispersion. I think studying it will always be good.
I think the park maintenance thing, yes, fixing the swing set or.
Totally, yes.
That's what comes into mind.
Right. But there's more, yeah, I, I agree. It is, yeah. But there's probably more to it that maybe we don't even recognize.
I, I think it's a valid, I mean, I think Council Walker brings up a valid point that I think if you just, I'm, I'm reading it again and again here. It is, I think it needs to be maybe modified to be a little bit more, instead of just as general as parks maintenance. I think it needs to be parks maintenance of stormwater facilities at parks or something, something to that degree. That's where you're kind of getting at. Yeah.
And another public works director mentioned that to me.
Nice. Yeah, we, we, we can, I can definitely add a little bit more language to make that a little bit more clear what we're talking about.
Good job.
Is there other comments? Council Walker, did you have one more about, uh, 5.2?
That's right. But that's kind of a new thing. What's, uh, urban forestry plan? Is that like our tree?
It's your tree canopy. So kind of, um, how to maintain and enhance your tree canopy? But is that like, Kelly, is that like the tree committee thing with the development that we've been trying to do for a while or?
Yeah, that, that one's going to come back on the radar in the nearest future, I will say. So policy 5.1, I believe, is talking about that more, the urban forestry code. This was actually, this would actually be a separate thing.
This came from Michelle, I think.
Yeah, it did. And I'm not, I'll just be very honest. I'm not that, I'm not an expert on what an urban forestry, forestry plan means exactly.
Who's Michelle?
Rashida.
Yeah, Rashida. I mean, again, this one, maybe we can elaborate on this one further. I think it would be worth looking into a little bit more and making this policy a little bit more descriptive.
What's, what's our objective there?
Correct. I agree.
To accomplish.
We've had some conversations about urban forestry plans through different, uh, through some of Michelle and myself, but we've never been able to go very far because of all the plans that we've been wrapped up in, throwing another one on the ground, especially after we didn't complete the tree plan.
And I know, and I know Council Ericsson, you've been interested in like a heritage tree program in the past. So it's, it's possible that you can include that with the urban forestry plan. I think.
I, I would love to do that. Um, there's a lot of, this heritage issues within the cities, as old as we are.
Tanya, do you have any other comments on policy 5.2? It's okay if you don't. I was just curious if you had any more background to provide or not.
You know, I think a lot of communities are looking at, uh, urban forestry plans because they're seeing die-offs of certain species that have lived there. You know, that people are used to having. And this question around what species are going to work in this place in the future, also connected to, um, protecting the community from fire risk. There, there's a lot of questions around what does an urban forest program look like that is both shading people from extreme heat and is also not promoting higher wildfire risk? And, and is made up of, of tree species that can actually sustain in that, in that, in those changing conditions. So there's a lot of, of, there are a lot of communities looking at that. And there's some funding coming from the federal government to help communities implement their urban forestry plans. And so now is a good time for, for, um, communities to be looking at formalizing, uh, a plan if they want to get some help potentially implementing it.
Thanks, Tanya.
Great.
Six. Seven. I believe that's it. Great.
Yeah. Note about funding as well. We could also have a police chief kind of talk us through, uh, the concept of defensible space. And, uh, there's a lot of funding apparently that's on the table for creating and kind of codifying what defensible space is in development. Um, so the fire chief was kind of adamant that we include some language around that, um, in the comprehensive plan. Because once you have things like urban forest or, um, urban forestry plan and, you know, sound development practices that, promote defensible space, those are the kind of things that really help in your grant applications for funding. So. All right. Um, that was, that was it. I'm happy to take any more last minute questions. We have a couple of points of feedback. It sounds like we have a couple of revisions to make.
I, I know.
Awesome. Thank you. So we'll make those revisions. Um, and then you will see this again, um, in the adoption process. So it is not your last chance. Um, and you'll have opportunity to continue making further revisions if you, uh, see the need.
Thank you so much. Great job.
Um, and then, sorry, I guess quickly next steps, just so you know where we're going from here. Um, I had on the PowerPoint, wanted to share that because I had some dates that I wanted to share with folks. But just to let you know, so we're going to wrap up this, this document. We're going to then move into the next block, which is governance and growth management. So we're talking about housing, we're talking about economy, and we're talking about land use and urbanization. So it's pretty hefty, top of hefty block area. A lot of the content is going to be coming from your brand new HNA and EOA and some other documents. Um, we're going to be delving into that work in the next. Um, we're going to be delving into that work in the next month or so. We are going to be drafting the, that preliminary block in September, October. So you will see a draft of that in the fall. And then I will come back to you probably just before the holidays in December to review that draft again, based on the feedback from our CAC and based on some additional stakeholder engagement, where we will likely be talking to folks like developers and, you know, like small businesses and such, to the extent that we can gather them together through interviews or a meeting at the CAC in November.
So are you going to have the housing needs analysis and all that data stuff before we start this or during?
Yes, that's kind of in conjunction with this. Um, I, where are we in the HNA right now? Is that?
Um, I think I'm going to be getting the, the final draft later this month.
Okay, great. And so, so I think ideally they're seeing the HNA before. Okay, great. So you'll have kind of a preview to that HNA. And then once we get to the goals and policies, we'll kind of see the link between the HNA and the goals and policies.
And we, and I can't really speak if we're definitely going to do this or not, but there might be some other internal discussion happening prior to November as well. Around the, around the topics, because they're kind of meaty.
Well, thank you so much. Thank you for doing a good job of taking our feedback to the permit. So I really appreciate it. With that, we will reconvene at the Sandy Urban Renewal Board at seven P M. And with that, will you please join me in the pledge of allegiance as I open our city council meeting?
I pledge allegiance to the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Yeah, please turn in public comments if you'd like to, or city reporter Jeff, if you've already given one, I'm ready for you. This is our, now our city council meeting.
I don't hear it real well, but I just wanted, do I, is this my last speak now?
Not yet, literally in like three minutes.
Okay.
Okay, so I'll call you right after. Yep. All right. So this is our city council meeting. I always start with the review of our agenda. I will be calling on changes to the agenda. Then I will go to public comment, which I will call people up to provide public comment. We will then get to our consent agenda that has our city council meeting minutes from our July seventeenth meeting. We'll move ahead to resolutions, which is a revision and expansion of the utility customer assistance program. And under new business, we have a noise exception for the chainsaw carving event. Then we'll round off our evening with a report from our city manager, as well as our committee and council reports. And Jeff, will you, for the third time this evening, will you please call the roll?
Yes, Mayor, Councilor Maiden.
Present.
Councilor Smallwood.
She has a thought.
Yes, Councilor Sheldon.
Here.
Councilor Walker.
Here.
Councilor Exter.
Here.
Councilor Hutchinson.
Excuse?
And Mayor Puller.
Here. All right. I will call for any proposed changes to tonight's agenda.
We talked about the last council meeting, but I didn't see it put on this agenda, which was the planning commission asked me to bring a motion to the city council to make a motion to recommend the city council, majority of the parks SDCs casting a pre mixed use development, be used for improvements at the Forest Park. And I did not see that.
Yeah, because what we were looking to do is to put that into our parks committee to actually develop a recommendation for our council out of our parks committee. We could certainly, if there's a vote of council, add it to our council agenda tonight. We could certainly add it and then discuss it and vote on it. I will say that my personal opinion is, is that I don't believe that's the counselor. I'm ready to hear the proposal tonight without some sort of vetting and recommendation from our, our parks committee that it kind of give us just what their plans and perspectives are with SDC money, but I, but I only speak for myself as a counselor.
So before you do that, I'd be happy to go back to the planning commission and make that recommendation to them and us just put this on the table for.
Oh, okay.
Well, it is on the agenda for Wednesday night with the parks board. And I looked at the agenda today and kind of freaked out a little bit because, because, yeah, I, I wouldn't mind just having a little discussion about it. I don't, it's, we need to make a decision because we, like you said, we don't have enough information, but I'm a little concerned about things. I was just going to share it at the end when I did.
Well, and that's what I was going to suggest. I believe our council reports would be the right time for that discussion. All right, perfect. All right, with that, we'll move ahead to public comment. So if you, has there been any one that submitted online? All right, so I have two submitted for public comment. I will be calling your names up at, here at the appropriate time. You have a three minute limit on your public comment. If you go a little long, that's fine. We're not real hard around here. And if you are, no, I don't need to go through those. I just need to call a name. Three minutes. First one is Carol Stevenson?
It's Emerson.
Emerson. Please welcome, you have three minutes.
I don't hear well, so I apologize.
No problem.
I'm struggling. I live on Hood Street in Sandy and I back up to the water tank. And when this water tank was built, they indicated that they would share any expense with the fence with the owner. But that's not the big problem. The big problem is the blackberries. They've overgrown the, the area back there. They've encroached on my fence. They're in my yard. I'm tired of cutting them. And I called Public Works and I haven't had success yet. So I thought I would try this avenue.
Oh, that's great. So there's the black, there's just the blackberry issue, but then is there an issue with the fence as well right now?
The fence, yes. The, the, there's a little lattice work that sits on the top of it and it's, it's broken down now. That's not the biggest issue though. The biggest issue is the blackberry. And I think the blackberries contributing to the falling down of the fence because it's really, they're pretty invasive right now and they're going to destroy those beautiful trees pretty soon.
Well, I got to tell you, thank you so much for coming to bringing this to our attention. So our staff's here, they hear it. It's definitely going to be reported back. And then what we do is, is that our next council meeting, our staff reports out the work in progress we've done on the previous meetings.
Well, thank you so much for giving me this opportunity.
Thank you so much. Appreciate you coming to give us this. All right, next one is John and Amy Hardesty and Faith Stewart. Welcome.
Hi, it's Ravenett.
Are we getting addresses?
Oh, look, they all.
We have addresses on here. I have, I have, I have it on here.
Well, I'm Amy Hardesty. I'm the executive director for the D thirty one foundation. We are a local nonprofit in town that focuses on building relationships and bringing hope to the community. John is my husband and the president and Faith has been our, on our procurement team. We hosted National May Out last week here in town this year, which was super fun. And this is just gives you some stats on what it looks like. So we had over a hundred volunteers this year. We had sixteen vendors, a combination of over six hundred volunteer hours. Over forty, we had forty five prizes that resulted in about six thousand dollars worth of Raffles donations. We had eight Dundies. Thank you, Chief Roberts. And Laurie, it was really wonderful. And after all of our expenses, we raised nine thousand one hundred and thirty dollars for Sandy Shop with a Cop program, which is three times more than we raised last year. So we made some changes this year. We were just really pleased with the community support. Faith did an exceptional job just rallying the community. She said every business she went into said, how can we help? And so we're just really pleasing on to say thank you guys for your support. We just really respect and appreciate our police officers and want to make sure that they're able to continue to, one, we, you know, respected by the community, but two, to be able to offer the shop with the cop program the way that it is. That's just phenomenal. So, thank you guys.
I missed this year, I said last year's, it's just so widely popular. How many attendees do you think you have?
We had over six hundred. And I would, I honestly think we had way more than six hundred, but we, the one thing that we were talking about changing was we didn't note to you that dinner was free at the events. And we had a lot of ticketed events this year. And so I think people skipped dinner and that's how we were counting how many people came once we did dinner for seven hundred.
I think a lot of, I think you're right.
Yeah.
Uh, well, I, I don't know, Amy. I think this may be a record for shop for a cop with everything else. It was coming. You know, they, from last year was a great job. I think you guys stepped it up even more this year, sort of phenomenally fast. You go to the city of Brescham and not to pick on people, but to kind of pick on people, right? Nothing going on aggressively. I had like one like ice cream truck that people are waiting for. And someone complained about it. And I said, well, that's because you don't have a D three one, you know, at community group organizing. And I really mean that because this is about recognizing our police and our police department. And it's incumbent on all of us to do that. And just thank you for your organization. You guys do more than just this every year. You're obviously very quick at turning these racks. These are pictures from this last week.
That was all fake.
Yeah, good job. But it was a great event. And then I'll additionally tell you that our family, extended family, you know, big reason they come to Sandy, do the one to Sandy is because there's a lot more for kids to do than in other places. And I think that's a real strong highlight of what you put together. So.
Thank you. We had a great team this year. We're excited to do it next year.
Thank you. All right. Well, that is, that I have submitted for public comment. Again, we will have a response to the previous public comment at our next meeting. With that, let's move ahead to our consent agenda. We have our city council meeting minutes from the July seventeenth meeting. Unless there's discussion, I will entertain a motion to adopt, which the shortest consent agenda we've had for a couple of meetings now. Make a motion, we adopt the consent agenda. Just a second. Motion by Counselor Sheldon, a second by Counselor Exter to adopt the consent agenda. All those in favor signify by saying aye. Opposed, nays? Motion carries. With that, let's move ahead. Thank you so much. Thank you.
Thank you.
And let's move ahead to new business. Nope, to resolutions. Again, thank you guys. Appreciate it. And let's do that resolutions, revision and expansion of utility customer assistance program.
Yeah, Mayor, if you don't mind, we skipped over the response to previous public comments and I do have, we had two at the last meeting.
Oh, I did. Okay, yeah, I apologize.
Two. The first was a couple of public comments from members of the skaters of Sandy organization regarding the contract and construction over there. Since that time, Rochelle has reached out to all of the skaters of Sandy for further involvement related to the skate park elements. Has been a little bit of interest, but not, not an exceptional amount from those efforts prepared to get them to come into have further involvement. We've only one person has taken her up on that, but we are actively working on continuing to engage them and a job to have them attend future meetings with relation to the construction of the skate park. And then Mr. Jenkins also spoke at the last meeting regarding, well, some of the skate, skate park and contract elements, as well as some other concerns he had in the community. I want to address the specific concerns because there was quite a number of, of items that he mentioned, but what I will say is the staff continues to meet with them as he, you know, visits city hall and we've had conversations about areas we are able to help him with and areas that we're not. And if you can continue to provide resources or information as to, you know, who and where you can find some of those resources he's looking for that we don't offer until.
Thank you. And with that, I will jump now to resolutions. So emptying here compared to what it was for the last two hours. And so the item that we have tonight is a revision and expansion of the utility customer assistance program. In twenty, I'm sorry, twenty twenty, the council adopted the existing utility assistance program. That was in conjunction with the significant rate we have with our wastewater rates. As you may recall, it's just a fifty percent reduction on those wastewater rates for eligible customers. We talked quite a bit about expanding that program during the budget process. And again, in June, when we adopted the new fee schedule, which included a reduced water rate as well. And then we found out during that process that the resolution and assistance program as it was currently written, specifically listed two thousand nineteen federal poverty line guidelines, as well as the fact that it was just for wastewater and not water. So this is more of a housekeeping item to clean up the income level that was previously listed to match the twenty twenty three, twenty twenty three levels as well as formally expanding it to include the water rates as well. Obviously, this is a really new thing right now with rate increases. There's been some dialogue about that and we're never happy to have to do those things, but you know, why we have to do them. But when we do them, let's do them in a way that helps out some of our neighbors that need it the most. So, yeah.
I'm, I'm fully in favor of this. I had a conversation with the teams last week from a veteran. I don't want to present that tonight because I think it's out of the scope of the conversation here. One of the conversations we had with him was that he was interested in seeing us consider veterans included in some of this. And some of the circles of inclusion doesn't always make a veteran, a low income person, but a lot of them do. So just something that will come up in the future. I think there's going to be a presentation. We talked about having him come and ask for us to take a look at utility reductions and consideration for veterans as well. But I think in terms of what's going on here, I think this is really needed.
That just makes me ask the question, as a veteran myself, veterans aren't being excluded through our assistance program.
No, but it doesn't mean that a veteran who is in, it needs to be a veteran who is in limited income. So we've, we've got some.
But that would be the same as somebody who's a non-veteran who's at, it's just for limited income folks, not, not veteran or not veteran specific, right?
Right. Well, I would say recognition of the fact that you are a veteran and I am not, that veterans, I think, are owed an fair amount of reconciliation to the things that they had to sacrifice when they let through that cell. So I would think in, at this point, I think it's still out of the scope of the conversation, but.
Yeah, I was just, I was just curious what the, what the direction was from that.
This was not specific to veterans.
All right. Well, great. Is there a motion to go ahead and before? I'll make a motion that we adopt the, adopt resolution twenty twenty three dash thirty. I'm sorry. Motion by Counselor Sheldon, a second by Counselor Maiden. All those in favor signify by saying aye. I oppose nays. Motion carries. All right, moving ahead, the new business, the noise exception for the chainsaw carving event.
Thank you, Mayor. So keep this brief. So in the last few weeks, I think on July fourteenth, it says in the report, we received a temporary land use application for a chainsaw art carving event in downtown Sandy by, it's basically where the ant farm building and where their ten is for the farmer's market. So it's the same location. They're proposing to use that lot for a chainsaw carving event for one day on August twenty sixth. So a few weeks from now, from eight AM to seven PM. As the staff report explains, there's going to be twelve carvers making piece of art and then they're going to be auctioning those off. There's also going to be some other information and tours from certified arborists and foresters. So it sounds like a pretty unique, fun event to me.
When is it?
August the twenty sixth.
The coast.
Is it, it is on that weekend, isn't it?
Starting Saturday at eight AM and things are.
Well, we should have.
Show here in Sandy.
So you're saying so the twenty sixth.
But the coast actually starts Friday.
Right.
It'll be the day before. And by the time Saturday rolls around, most runners are already through town.
Well, but this starts at eight o'clock. And so, yeah.
They'll be. Most of the, yeah, most of the runners that come through town will be coming through on Friday. They're, they're, they're almost all done by middle of the night.
That's just because you're on the fast team, Laura. You're on the slow ones.
They better be on that. They better be.
All the same. It's all the same now.
I, I'm not sure that there's going to be a significant amount of interaction because I know that the parking on this one is designated on the street, correct?
Yeah, so the proposal would consist of chainsaws carving things. My department processes temporary land use applications. So we would either approve or deny the actual event. What you're, what you're being tasked with is approving or denying the noise, which if you deny it, then basically we're going to be denying you that as well. But under the key considerations and analysis, I outlined some different sections of title eight of your code that speak to noise. So one of them that you could consider being a violation for, you know, carving with chainsaws would be loud, disturbing and unnecessary noises, such as the discharge in the open air of the exhaust or stream of an engine. And then it goes on to say more along that line. So the, the proposal before each night would be an exemption or an exception to that code section. There is no code criterion for you to review. I know that's come up in the past. It's the code criterion. There's nothing. So basically it's just yes or no. It's not a clear and objective issue. It's not a housing application.
I think it's. I think it's cool.
I just said, I closed my seat down too fast, so I don't have it up. Where's, where's it being located at? And what's the time of those work?
Yeah, seven, eight AM to seven PM.
And, you know, Carl's not working a lot.
Yeah.
No.
So I, I met with Austin, who's the organizer of this event. He's also a teacher at the high school. Earlier this week in, he's got great, he's got this so well planned, you guys. He's got members of the Forest Service are going to be there. He's got arborists that are going to be there. They're going to be doing this chainsaw carving stuff. He's hoping to have, you know, linemen and just kind of advance this. I think it's a really neat idea and a really neat opportunity.
A ditto what Lori just said. I know Austin pretty well, too. He's part of the historical society, and so I've met him many times. And he is part of the forestry club for the high school as well. So, and I did a kind of a survey because this is right next door to my office. We're not really going to be open on that Saturday morning, so I don't think it'll make much difference. The biggest impact it will be, we're talking to the liquor store folks. This blocks off one of the roads to the backside, and I don't know if people just naturally don't want to be seen buying liquor or not. So it usually is a busy spot. Some of us are more advanced, knowledgeable about liquor than others, but.
It's, it's not a road closure.
Originally, they had asked to, but.
Is that right? Then that is nothing that's going to be.
Yeah, you're, you're correct. It was originally, but now they're just going to be doing it all the while.
All right. That's great.
I just have one question, Kelly. Number eleven on the permit, it says this permit is a license for the use of city owned or managed property.
That might be a, that might be a permit issue. Where's that at? I'm sorry.
Well, I mean, it kind of rode wide way, you know, yeah, I mean, I could kind of see how it applies. I was just just a little confused because I thought always it's happening in a park and then myself.
Oh.
Property. I was like, oh, farmer's market, that's letters and.
Yeah, they filled that out, so we included it in the application, but that's, it's a land use permit. It's not a special events permit. So exhibit A is actually the applicable permit that we will use. We only included, yeah, I can see your confusion. We only included that because they submitted it to us, but that's if you're using Centennial Plaza or something like that.
All right.
Good, good point.
Support it all the way.
So I, I do support it too, but I just had one question. This is for my own thought process for the time it finishes. I like the eight AM start time, but I think seven PM is kind of late. But I imagining the events are going to be winding down.
Given the awards.
Right. So I just wanted to make sure that we're going to be chainsaws buzzing at six PM when people are coming downtown to eat. According, according to Austin, means that it's pretty well done by two, three o'clock. Doing all the bit food and the recognition and all that, the mayor said.
Oh, cool. Can I, I move to approve the noise exception for file number twenty-three dash zero two four. Temp for August twenty-six, two thousand twenty-three from eight AM to seven PM at three eight six zero zero practical.
Motion by councillor Sheldon, a second by councillor Walker. All those in favor signify by saying aye. Opposed, nays. Motion carries. I think it's going to, I can't say it for sure. Cause I haven't been there yet. All right. Thanks, Kelly. Appreciate it, buddy. And we had you running around today. All right, Tyler.
All right. Just a couple of items. First thing, this Wednesday is the last concert in the park for the season. Be a great time. I'm sure I'll see some of you there again.
So what's the Parkway logo, like a nineties logo or an eighties logo? You know, how they have that kind of.
Jay's design was like an eighties.
Guys, show up at some of that.
If your shirt shrunk as much as mine did in the dryer.
Oh, really? Well, I gave it to my daughter, so that works.
Mine, my seven year old.
I can bring the B shirt for you.
Oh, there you go.
Just a quick just a quick update that the city manager recruitment closed yesterday and two weeks from today our consultant will be here to, most of the folks are going to be in session with you to update you on candidates. I'm largely uninvolved in that process. Just wanted to remind you of the stance that recruitment at this point in time. And then a little, you know, I think you're all aware of this, but some bittersweet news. Chief Roberts is officially retiring September first. So we've sort of nailed down that date. We're working on getting a recruitment firm on board to assist us in the process of recruiting a new police chief. Obviously, there will be a need for an interim police chief in the short term. And so we'll be making more official decisions around that later this week. I'll have an update for you at the next council meeting, the one you don't know kind of what the status was right now and where things are going. And to thank Chief Roberts for his over twenty years of experience or dedication here. I'm sure it's gone by in a flash, right? You will be missed and it's appreciated, but you're on to some exciting things on the other side.
We'll have the interview before September.
Yes.
Yeah.
It's going to, you know, lock in details prior to making a sort of announcement. So. All right.
Thank you. Appreciate that, Tyler.
Thank you.
And Carl.
Want to say my congratulations on retiring, having retired myself back in two thousand. It's a different lifestyle. So Ernie, thanks for all the work you've done, and I hope you have great retirement and even whatever it is you're going to do. I don't know if you're going to be traveling or you're going to be going to find some other job or whatever. But thank you for your many years of service here in San. I attended the Tackamas River Watershed Council two weeks ago, and they are all excited about the possibility of being able to contribute to the riparian work that could be done with the fees and things that are possibly coming down. So one of the things they asked us to do is as we get to the point where that's confirmed, that we start interacting with them. So city manager, I imagine that's something that you and your staff and people would be wanting to start thinking about if that's something we're going to be doing. So was one of the big things that they asked questions about. They had heard a number of rumors. Things going to be with our our sewer water, there's, yeah, sewer water. Okay. I attended the National Night Out for about an hour and a half, and it was jammed. I really am pleased, pleased by how many people did. I think that's a great facility. Went to it two years ago. Mr. Walker and I were out there bouncing around in the cow pile and pasture. This time, this last week was really a good location. I really liked lots of good places to be, lots of places spread out. I wouldn't doubt that there would be a thousand of them over the evening. But anyway, it was a great place. I will be attending the fire board meeting this Wednesday, and that's pretty much it for me.
Jeff, would you mind just bringing up Google Maps and zooming in on Bornsted Park? And that development. And Kelly, when you get a chance, can you send me a copy of the final order for that? I couldn't find that very, I, it's probably on there somewhere. I just couldn't find it. On that cascade briefing. So. Okay, thank you. So first of all, the, yeah, the D thirty-one thing, I was out camping, but I'm really pleased that they helped in one of our city parks. Because I think it really does also just show up our parks. And so, yeah, great job on that. So what I just happened to look at when I was downloading all the gen items tonight for us and all our meetings that we had tonight. Whereas I saw the Parks and Trails meeting there too. And the staff report for that showed something about approving. Okay, so, so can you zoom in on the park in that? So what's being developed is that big square to the north of the park. Okay, zoom out a little bit. Where it's being developed there. Okay, so what's being proposed is in here, that's going to all be developed with those apartments. There is going to be under, under, what is that seventeen point something, point one sixty, ninety or something. The bunch of the apartments there, they're going to have to have like, I don't know, twenty-five thousand square feet of playground already. A play, open space play, playground area. So that's already planned, I saw in the requirement. The sidewalk there on Village, on the left side, can you point to the left, the Village Boulevard?
Kelly, this is not going to be potentially being appealed or coming back.
So on the site, on the Village Boulevard, which is right where it says travel there, that's Village Boulevard, there is a site. There's a sidewalk, I assume, going in on the whole east side of the property, right? Well, the other road will get the other half street improvement and a sidewalk. There's already a sidewalk on the left side. So there'll be sidewalks on both sides. That sidewalk on there going up to two eleven is called T one four four, T forty-four or something. What is it?
T forty-four.
T forty-four is a project in the Parks and Trails master plan that is actually a sidewalk. Just to kind of be linking Bornsted Park up to two eleven and Ponder Lane on beyond, Ponder Park beyond. So, so that's one of the projects. Now, the thing that comes into play is we've done this Bornsted Park plan, and we spent a huge amount of money on that. We, over a million dollars to buy the property, over well over a million dollars to build it, design it and all that. And then we've also put in, I think, a hundred and sixty thousand dollars in park structure. The shade structures there just recently around the splash pad. The thing that's kind of going on with the master plan, I mean, with the Parks Planning Commission folks, is they suggested that we take at least fifty-one percent, I'm kind of guessing there because I haven't seen the final order, something about fifty-one percent of the SDC, Park SDC money and keep it in Bornsted Park. And what folks don't understand is that Bornsted Park Base Two, which is, is planned for years five through ten, okay? And we already have this long list of projects like Deer Point and Tupper Park and Ponder Lane and trails that, you know, there's a whole list of projects and Parks and Trails projects that we have, including Community Campus, that we already have need to use our Park SDC money for. What happened was Deer Point, folks, if you remember, and some of you don't, but Carl remembers, Deer Point folks were really upset that we didn't build. They, they were told by their realtors that they were getting a park, and we had to tell them, remember those guys. We had to tell those people, no, we use the Park SDCs from Deer Point to build Bornsted Park. So now what's happening is.
There was a logic to that, you know.
And, and, you know, yeah, but, but now what's happening is that there's this proposal to take the Park SDC monies from this apartment complex, and instead of using it for the high priority things that we just identified in our Parks Master Plan and adopted, we're going to skip the, the list and go to the five, your five through ten projects of Bornsted Phase Two. Now, that's what I can tell is being proposed. I don't, I don't know, you know, completely all the information about that, but that's what I think is being proposed. And that's really going to upset all the Deer Point people and all the Ponder Lane people and the Champion Way Park and all these other trail projects and everything over on my side of town. All these people that are going to be affected because we're skipping the line on Bornsted Phase Two. Now, that said, there is some reason for, for discussion. On the north side of the boundary of the park, there's a road that needs to go in there. And I don't know, Kelly, whether that road is getting built by the developer. Okay, they're not required to build a road on the south side of the property.
Correct.
They are or are not?
They're not.
They're not. Okay. And so something about, so is there anything getting built there along the park? I don't know. We don't need to talk about it because that's not the time to do it. But I don't have a, a clear understanding. But there was some proposal that if they were building a road there and building a sidewalk on the north, on their property, that at the same time, it would make sense to go ahead and have them do the south, you know, the, the sidewalk and half street improvement on the other side. But it sounds like that's not even being required. So I don't quite understand what's being proposed. And I don't understand very well the staff report for the parks. They're working on kind of trying to clarify that. But my concern is that, first of all, we have not identified, we have not talked to the Deer Point people or all the other people that had a lot of input into our Parks Master Plan and how we came up with our priorities. So if we're skipping the law, all those projects and dedicating more money to Bornsted, which is already our biggest, most developed park that we have, bar none through the city, I'd be concerned. The second thing is setting a, setting SDC funds aside for, you know, where it's collected here and it has to be spent there is a precedent setting move that I wouldn't want to start. Because we've already told those Deer Point people, we took their SDCs and spent them at Bornsted. And so it'd be very unfair to turn around and say, but now we're going to, you know, change the rules on that. And my third point is we have this Parks and Trails master plan that we are supposed to be following that had a huge amount of public input. We've got a list of priority, project priorities. There's probably a little bit of room for some, you know, some massaging of that when it makes real sense and efficiency to do that. But I'm very concerned that we're asking our Parks and Trails Advisory Board to kind of do, to do all this. And we haven't done the adequate public involvement to, you know, to talk to all these other people. So that's my concern. Yeah. Matt had a great time camping last week. So, thank you.
Thank you. Real quick, there, there is a lot there. I agree with a lot of it, especially the SDC precedent. I agree with that quite a bit, actually. I've heard a lot about these Deer Point folks that have heavy interest in the park. But the challenge that I will set out there, and I hope it's not because we go and shape them into it because they need, it's just remarks I'm going to say later today. We got a lot of people that want to say a lot on Facebook, but they sure don't want to show up to a council meeting and testify. And in my five years of being mayor, I have not received a single email on Deer Point. I've not received a phone call on Deer Point. I have not received a Facebook message or seen a commentary on Deer Point. The only time I ever hear about people being upset about the Deer Point Park is when it's raised here at council. And I'm not saying it's not happening. I'm not saying that at all. But my challenge is, and it's going to be when I give my marriage report is, is people in this community, if they want to see things get done a certain way or differently, need to get active and start testifying to council and joining our Parks Committee meetings and go into our Parks Committee meetings and engaging in the process so that they're heard. And it's, it's just, it's ongoing frustration of mine that I hear about these things from these different groups. But we don't actually ever get anybody, you know, being proactive and showing up and engaging in the process.
Really quick, and I'll just, I know this isn't part of the agenda, but I'm a realtor there. I've sold several houses there. I, I have not heard a horrendous amount of action and wildness about the lack of a park there. Turning into a dog park is what it's doing. I've heard people ask, why aren't we doing it to the, was that the Terrace, Old Terrace East or whatever that is? That, why don't we put the two of them together? What's wrong with?
That's Deer Point Park.
I know that. That was the whole strategy. That was the reason why we said we're going to wait on the Deer Park.
And we got the property now?
So that aside, I, I want to trust our Parks and Trails Committee to have a rationale. I want to hear what they're talking about, why they're thinking this is a more important way to go than the other, lacking the large amount of comments about Deer Point, but knowing that Bornsted is one of our most popular. And I get phone calls about how Bornsted needs to be more.
Me too.
I don't hear that from Deer Point, other than they would like to see the, the size larger and let's move forward on it when that happens. I, I don't want to trust our trails.
I appreciate that. I'll make, I'll make a point to get out there and talk to these other neighborhoods because Sandy Blood Park needs work. Well, because you guys, you know, because. Because you guys haven't heard any of this, because I've heard it. But if you guys haven't heard it, then you need to hear it because Ty, Tyler's heard it.
Okay, Rich.
Just add my two cents. I think that we have master plans for a reason. I'll just leave it at that. So on to that. I'll start out with my kind of criticism piece. A while ago, I, I think I've been beating a drum for a while. And, and yesterday, coming back from eastern Oregon and driving by, oh gosh, and I just, I, I, this to loot, thank you. I noticed there's no trees, and I remember that's where that developer came through and cut down all the trees because it was more cost effective to take down the tree rather than follow our rules. And so I've been kind of beating that drum. I think we need to revisit that. And so I'd really like to see that pretty soon. Especially with us potentially, you know, allowing more development to occur and stuff.
I just want to make sure that our, the business decision to go ahead and disobey us should have some consequences. Um, so I'd like to see some, some upping of that to wherever it needs to go. Yeah, I apologize at risk. I certainly remember the conversation. I don't remember the action. Was there no, did we never, were we never able to take action on that? The fines were very minimal. We wanted to change that. Yeah, no, hasn't. Yeah.
As as far as the action on that particular property or the tree code update process?
The fine increase, the fine increase, yeah.
Oh, yeah, that's gonna be, so right now I'm a one man crew as far as planning is concerned. I do have a senior planner starting on September eighteenth. And yeah, thank you. And two of his projects are gonna be looking into the tree stuff and um the fees or the fines, sorry. So that is gonna be something. Yeah, I I just haven't had an opportunity to look at it. But yeah, that's, that's gonna be something we're looking into, so.
Yeah, I I mean, just the fines and I'd also, I mean, I I, I think we can also even put positive building and stuff. You know, when you just blatantly do that, I, that, that's just irritating. That used to be, I remember people coming and testifying, that was a beautiful section, you know, that's. Going to be gone, but now it's even more detrimental, right? Anyways, it just, it just clicked in my mind when I was driving by. I was like, oh, man, it looks so much different and and there's not even what we asked to do that, so. So in that regard.
That just closed on Sunday, so I haven't even seen the application yet.
We have names and we are ready to start looking at them.
We have applications correct yet.
Good. So concerts in the park, I just want to say, hey, those are super cool. So thank you for doing that. It's cool to see staff there as well. I, it's been really neat to see. It's first year I've kind of really get to get out and go to that, so. Um, and then also, um, unfortunately, I wasn't able to make National Night Out because my work ethic needs me to be somewhere else. But being there, I did notice that um. And and I don't know where where the employees' stance is on on their volunteer status. Uh, but we have an employee that volunteers with our tips, which for those of you that don't know, that's uh trauma intervention program. And so it's the people, when someone passes away, they respond out and and support the family. And it's a volunteer thing, so it kind of got me thinking a little bit. I don't know if we have it. At at our, here, but do we do anything to kind of. Reward or honor our employees that volunteer them, that offer volunteer time? Whether that be coaching or something like that, and if not, I'd like to kind of think about something like that in the future.
We don't currently, but I think that's a great recommendation. And I, in particular, it generally involves like taking a day off of their on-call. It's taking time on their, you know, leave bank or other, other, you know, financial means that they may have available to go and take those, those calls and so, yeah.
Yeah, I'd really like to explore something like that. Um, and and I I hate to use the word incentive, but maybe even like some kind of an, an incentive based. Thing when you volunteer some members or something. So for the tips program. I, no, it doesn't just have to be tips. It's just what got me thinking about that. Um, you know, uh, the employee was managing a booth there and. I stirred and we got to chat and it just got me thinking, um. There, there's, there should be, I I, it's really kind of cool to see staff out there volunteering, right? Whether that be that or coaching, right? Or, I mean, whatever kind of other, but I think you can put some parameters there, right? So it can't just be like, well, I volunteered to serve the internet, or you know what I mean? But I think with some parameters there, maybe even the number of hours, I don't know. It's just uh some employee appreciate, I I really appreciated seeing that. I thought it was super cool. I just think it's.
Yeah, we have our annual, you know, volunteer recognition for those who volunteer for us, but we don't really have anything for. Those of us that volunteer and recognize that the community benefits of that, right, so.
That's my report. Thank you.
Thank you.
Laurie. And by the way, you don't get a uh a mug like the rest of us got tonight.
I got your free Laurie.
Thanks. I appreciate you looking out for me, Chris, because obviously Stan isn't.
Oh, hi.
So uh, first of all, uh, I just wanted to uh thank Chief Roberts for his dedication and service to the community of Sandy. I know. You're not officially retiring for a few months or for a month, actually. It's like right or right around the corner, but thank you so much uh for what you've brought to this community. Second of all, uh, being the Parks Board liaison, I I'd like us to take the opportunity to trust the system. And allow them to look at this and make a decision, and then we will have the opportunity as a council to look at it again. So um, I I think they'll make the right decision and 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 uh they've got a really good, strong working board. Uh, I did attend National Night Out. Uh, it was a great turnout, super cool event. And I gotta tell you, I think we've got some uh major league pitchers uh in town because I spent a lot of time in the water in the dunk tank. So, and lastly, uh, just to kind of uh repeat what uh Rich said, the concerts in the park have been absolutely amazing. And thanks you guys so much for putting that on.
Thank you, Laurie. Um, Chris.
I don't have much because I have a vacation for ten days, but I'll start with Chief Roberts. Thank you for your service to this community and. I know I don't know you that well, but I have a problem about you and I appreciate all of your time. Tips, I would be a full supporter in recognizing them. For those who know, tips was very important in my life, two and a half years ago when my wife passed away. They were. The second people on scene and they walked me and my daughters down a path for a few months, actually. They were very helpful in in the start of my recovery, so I would definitely like to support recognition of them and others like them in our community. And then lastly, the last point would be two pieces of it. That Parks SDC for Bornstead is the proposal from the planning commission was. The apartments was gonna generate approximately five hundred thousand dollars and the planning commission was asking city council to um do a majority, fifty-one percent. So let's call it two hundred and sixty thousand towards Bornstead improvements, not the entire thing. The second part of this is I'm not an advocate for that or against that. I'm just a vehicle bringing the message to the city council. So I don't know if I need to be there at Parks Board to recommend that or if this statement is gonna be there for them to review. I'm just bringing it up because the planning commission asked me as the liaison to bring you the city council, so that's what I'm doing. Right, Roger, indifferent, it's not up to me as counselor. What we just said, I trust our system and our process to make the decision for what they they want, so. Other than that, I'm gonna try my best to be at Concert of the Park Wednesday night.
Yes. Um, alright, for me. Microphone. So we've talked about this at our goal setting. I know Tyler and Jeff, we've had some conversations, but just. Uh, maybe think of it as, as we've talked about, we can improvements to the audio and stuff of this room. Um, I think that's important. I also think we should maybe, and I haven't seen other communities do it, so it may not be available, but just while we're on the topic. Um, some sort of caption, I don't know if if there's apps that you can put, we can put our meeting into that just. Does, I know on Facebook you can choose captions, but I don't know, but like you said, nice, you know, for someone watching our meetings. But as we're looking at improvements, I think the hearing portion, we've consistently get people asking us to move closer to these mics. They don't realize that. They're not going out there. They're only going in here. Um. Uh, night out on public testimony, I said a little bit ago, you know, and nobody's, you know, we got probably like two extra people watching this meeting, so they'd have to go on YouTube and watch one of these to actually see this, but. You know, it, you, community engagement is just more than going on social media and being a keyboard warrior on whatever topic, you know. And it's just, it's disappointing and frustrating as I'm, as someone who volunteers on council. Who sees everything that our counselors do with their volunteer time that do a lot for this community. Uh, to hear some of the visceral things that we sometimes hear in a, in the social media setting, but never materialize like in person at our meeting. Or in a well-thought-out email to council or correspondence or something that actually tries to like push the needle forward in a positive way. And I just, uh, you know, my challenge to to people would be is, is before maybe going out on social media and spouting some stuff out. Maybe do a little bit of research, maybe contact a fellow counselor or myself. Uh, or a member of the staff, try and figure out something or come to a council meeting, join a committee, get involved in our community. But uh, you know, we'll continue to try to do a better job of ourselves communicating out, save the source newsletter, social media and everything else. Uh, but uh, just. We're all paying the same bills that everybody else is paying. In fact, if you talk to Jamie, I think I have a leak. I think I'm paying a lot more than the rest. So, you know, uh, we're members of this community going through the same stuff everybody else is, so it's just a reminder of that. Um, and then just uh to close out, uh, night out was awesome. I've already kind of commented on that. And, you know, when I go to what, you know, and I think I want parks everywhere, but I just, uh, when I go to, I agree with that comment that Carl said about. Uh, my interactions, every time I go to that Bluff Park, I wish it was more. I just, I wish there was, I think there's the opportunities there are endless. Oh, not Bluff Park, I'm sorry.
Because the Bluff Park people think that.
No, I do. I think that about left and I think that about what we're talking about, where the splash pads are, Bornstead Park. Um, and that's it. Uh, construct your grades, uh, keep driving up attendance. Thanks, everybody. Appreciate it.